I'd like to call the meeting of the Western Reserve Board of Education to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Richard Blevins.
Present.
Melissa Potts. Brian Daniel. Mark Halls. Lisa Powell.
As we stand tonight, I'd like to have a few moments of silence for 9/11 before we do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Back to the agenda, Treasurer's recommendations. It is recommended that the minutes of the August 14 regular meeting of the Board of Education be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls? Mrs. Powell?
It is recommended that the August 2014 financial reports be approved, the August listing of bills be approved as mail to each member in advance of the meeting.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls? Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
It is recommended that the Board declare transportation for the following students impractical and submit the parents' request for payment in lieu of providing transportation to the Mahoney County ESC Governing Board for approval. If approved, payment to the parents will be calculated by the State Department of Education.
Mr. Halls? Yes. Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes. It is recommended that the 2014-15 fiscal year appropriation resolution spending plan be approved as per the most recent amended official certificate of estimated resources in the amount of $11,173,890.
You're right.
Eight hundred ninety dollars.
Took a long time to come up with that number.
Also, that the authorization be given, the Treasurer to modify the appropriation accounts when necessary and meet payroll and voice obligations as they become due.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls? The appropriations are in your folder. This is our revenue, but the expenditures are in your folder.
It is recommended that the agreement with Kanter &amp; Company CPAs for the preparation of the June 30 annual financial reports that conform with the generally accepted accounting principles with fiscal years 14 and 16 be approved at a cost of $5,000.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. It is recommended that Michelle Jones and Janelle DeSanto be added to the classified substitute list.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes.
It is recommended that Barbara Dagnan be added to the classified substitute list and also be approved as a certified nurse substitute.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes. It is recommended that Michael Velasco be approved as a substitute van driver.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes. And the fourth, it is recommended that the following tutors be hired for the 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork, Stacy Mercer and Jennifer Hood.
Those were both tutors that were here last year and we had them to start Stacy's with the middle school and Jen's with the elementary because Debbie can elaborate more, because of kindergarten that needs to be done and the kindergarten readiness that needs to be done, what, another week, I think?
We've already started it and had to be done by the end of September.
So typically, we don't hire, and we'll hire some more tutors in probably in October as we find the needs, but right now, those were more of the, right off the bat, something we need to get some of that extra stuff done.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. It is recommended that Robert Cameron be hired as the ninth grade volleyball coach for 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork.
And again, I indicated to you, there was, I think, nine freshman girls that aren't playing JV, so, you know, so, one of those things, you want to keep that going and, you know, we'll just see how we do with some of those other supplementals year to year, but the 9.9 percent and the memorandum of understanding is next or the one after that. Came up with that because that's what we had done for the ninth grade basketball, you know, you get into what season is longer and all that, but trying to be equitable and that's what we come up with on that.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. It is recommended that the agreement with Mahoney County Educational Service Center for services to students qualifying under opportunities for Ohioans with disabilities be approved at a cost not to exceed $2,275 for the period from October 1, 2014 through September 30, 2015.
This is a service we've always done. I believe they've changed the name and now it used to be referred to as the Bureau of Vocational Rehabilitation. And it's our, mostly our high school special ed kids, giving them opportunities to get jobs in some of the shelter workshops and some of those kind of things. Somebody from the county comes and gives them information as ways they can carry on beyond high school and that, so it's something we've always done. I think they've just changed the name on that.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls? Yes. Mrs. Powell? Yes.
It is recommended that the memorandum of understanding adding a ninth grade volleyball coach to Section 6.055 of the master agreement between the Western Reserve Board of Education and the Teachers' Organization of Western Reserve, known as COW, be approved at 9.9 percent of the base cell. Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Number eight, it is recommended that Kay Bartow be approved as an unpaid volunteer certified athletic trainer for the 2014-15 Western Reserve Football Team.
Again, as I had indicated, with the Colombian game with Gary Smith going, you know, getting hurt on the sidelines, popped into my head, man, where do we stand with all these people on the sidelines? And we did some checking and we were putting ourselves at risk with some of that, those people that are not, they're down there, but they're not necessarily board-approved or, you know, okay. So, that special guest is, or actually, for number nine, I shouldn't get too far ahead, but to lump those together, special guest was wording that the insurance company said, you know, our liability carrier said that that's, you can approve people as that, you know, special guest. If there's, if there was an event that we were doing, you know, I know sometimes, I think that, some years, we've had the dads come down on senior night, you know, so that's something we'll have to look ahead to if it's, you know, to approve those people as special guests for that one night, but I guess we're running a risk and I hate to look at everything from that perspective, but unfortunately, all it takes is one bad, one bad thing and you could be hurt.
Our insurance guy was quite one.
Yeah, we pay about $45,000.
We pay $45,000. He said it takes one person.
For liability insurance.
Or they'll, you know.
One claim.
He said we can double it or we can drop you and say, no, if you're not going to listen to our advice, we're not going to insure you.
That's what those next three items all pertain to that.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes. It is recommended that Reverend Lyd be approved as a special guest of the 2014-15 Western Reserve Football Team. The only suggestion I would, I'd like to change the wording on that and just say unpaid volunteer because that's really been for 25 years.
Well, he's really, he's not coaching, he's not doing equipment, I think, I mean, we can do that, but, you know, it's, he's there.
If it causes a problem, that, you know, I just.
Yeah, and it's not, it's nothing more than just approval for him to be on the sidelines. Like I said, you know, the athletic trainer, the equipment manager, retards, well, he's taking care of the water and some of that stuff, but.
I don't think that makes any difference.
Whatever you guys feel.
Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. It is recommended that Richard Hartsel be approved as an unpaid volunteer equipment manager for 2014-15 Western Reserve Football Team.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes. Number eleven, it is recommended that Michael Velasco be hired as the ninth grade boys' basketball coach for 2014-15 school year pending number of participants and all required paid work.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes.
It is recommended that Andrew Whitmer be hired as the eighth grade boys' basketball coach for 2014-15 school year pending number of participants and all required paperwork.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
We have an agenda here. Superintendent's recommendations, it is recommended that Tina Ambrosia be approved as an unpaid volunteer drama club advisor for the 2014-15 school year pending all required paperwork.
She has worked with Chris Egger forever and, you know, they, again, doing the fall show, looking at, in November, actually, Chris sent an email today looking to do it Thursday and Friday because hopefully, we'll be playing football game that Saturday night, November 20th or thereabouts, so, she's kind of been used to that November thing, so, Tina's always helped with the plays.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes.
It is recommended that Monica Gross and Victoria White be added to the athletic work
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Halls? Yes. Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Before you read this one, I'll just, I'll kind of explain and I got something handed out to you because that's not real clear and somebody might panic when they read that. Our cafeteria, we've talked about this for quite a while, last year even, some vending machines and with the kids that stay after school for practices and that kind of thing, they've got some vending machines that kind of snapped, anything from fruits to snack bars, granola bars, drinks, that kind of thing. So, the agreement that they've come up with is for two, two of these type of vending machines to be placed, one in the cafeteria and one in the reserve building. And last year, a couple of different times, I'd see kids after school going to the machines we have and said, you know, if there were something like crackers or, you know, and there could be any kind, you can even get little sandwiches or bagels, things like that. So, the cafeteria is taking us on.
And I think our cafeteria people can actually make the sandwiches and.
Or cookies or.
Package it.
It's got a lot of, a lot of options to do.
We don't have to purchase, like, processed, it can be fruit, or it can be fresh.
Fresh fruit, you know, any, I mean, it's not specifically just the things listed on here, those are just possibilities. The agreement is for $308 a month for two machines, that's the lease agreement, which, you know, anything that they make over the 308, there is going to be profit for them. So, it can be terminated anytime without any, any cost or any, you know, fee to get out of that contract. After five years, the machines are ours. What kind of condition they'll be in after five years, but, you know, but that's, that's something there.
Did we get a proposal in five?
I don't know that she's done that or not. I think their worry was, you know, if it's something that was going to take off or not. I think it will.
My only suggestion is that I would like to see for six months and make sure that they're going to be able to make that payment because it's going to come out of the kitchen fund. It's not going to come out of the general fund.
We are, we should, we should, we should fully activate.
So, is there a possible?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think, like I said, targeting those kids.
I just.
You know, after school.
I don't know if it will be $350.
Do you need volume, like, at the prime point?
It could be something that we look at and see.
Get out of the office, get out of the.
And then buy some, yeah, that's true, too.
That was my only worry. I just, I think that kids will spend the money, I just don't know.
And this is going to be cash only, you know, they can be set up to use their numbers like they do with cafeteria. Our worry is, is when they do it at the cafeteria line, cafeteria workers that are watching. After school, I got somebody's number, hey, come on, this is on Joe, you know, and buying everybody's stuff.
And I know.
So, it's cash only, I saw in there, I think it's made to take dollar bills, five dollar bills and 10 dollar bills, give change and all that, and the cafeteria is going to take care of stocking it and doing it, so I think it's a, I think it's a pretty good.
There's even an app that they can add and it's only like $100 to add where the kids can scan their cell phones to their bank accounts.
I would stick with one card.
And have a candy bar fall out, I mean, really, they just read your cell phone.
Let's keep it simple.
I think it's a great idea.
Do you second?
I second it.
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell? Yes. Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes. Building principals, draw your stripes.
It feels like we have never left school, to be honest with you. We just, like, cruised right into the new year and we've actually, this is a week and a half that we've been here, one full week and then tomorrow will be the half, and we had meet the teacher and that, that just works really well where the kids bring all their stuff in, they get to see the teachers and meet them and especially the kindergartners. You want to make it go. Anyway, but we, it was good. I wanted to show you, you can pass these around, I just have to have them back, but these are some of the Think Stretch books. We offer these to the parents in the summer, they buy them, and they have science, math, social studies, and language arts, just little one-page activities that the kids can do or, you know, at their own pace, and then, and the different levels, and so it's like, if they're leaving first grade, it says, you'll see on the bottom, it says first going to second, second going to third, and then next Friday, depending on how much of it they finish, we have a little award ceremony and they get a Brain Niac Award for silver or gold. And we make a big deal, we do it during the lunch period so it doesn't take away from the school day, but I do it during the lunch period so the kids can see the other kids getting them. Last year was the first year we did this and it's good. Anything that we can do to keep that going over the summertime is great. So, anyway, that's one thing that we do in the summer. We doubled the number of students that actually participated in this and it's total voluntary, so, yeah, I haven't really looked at.
Oh, my, Row, B-R-O-W-S.
Isn't it cute, isn't it cute yet, it is, it is. To go along with that, we have, the parents have asked us if we would do, math is really, really causing them a really hard time, the whole way up, and so they asked if we, if PTO could hire our tutors or pay our tutors and do a parent workshops throughout the year, just kind of like we did with the language arts last year. So, I said, that's up to you guys and substitute tutors. So, they're working with the tutors and they're pretty happy about doing that, designing different levels of math workshops for parents, how do you support your children at home with math? And so, we're working on that together with them. Our program last year was very successful, all of our students passed the third grade guarantee with, I can't remember the percentage, I think I gave it to you in that goal report, but we had like 70 something percent that passed and accelerated or advanced and are reading very well. I would like, I talked to Danielle Matus and we'd like to maybe look at putting a proposal together to present that at the Title I conference and prelims in the spring. We have one in the fall and one in the spring, and we'd like to work on presenting that in the spring. Title I is, of course, for the students who are, they're kind of in between the cracks, they're not special ed, that they're, that they're falling below, and this is for parents, actually, for teachers and parents. And what's going on right now, we're transitioning to the new assessment. The new assessments are two parts. One is a project, a performance-based assessment, and that's where the students actually have to perform various tasks during the assessment. It can be on the computer or it could be pencil paper, either one, some of us are doing pencil paper, some are doing computer, but we're getting them ready for that, so you'll start hearing more about that kind of thing. We're in the kindergarten readiness assessment and the teachers had to go get certification to be able to actually administer that. And what that is, is basically more measuring preschool skills. If you look on the preschools, if you go by a preschool, you can see it says step up to quality on the preschool, where a step up to quality preschool is totally voluntary unless it's state-run preschool, and they're measuring what skills children are leaving preschool with. Are they, when they come to kindergarten, what skills do they have when they met, when they leave preschool? So, this is the first year we're right now giving it, our children, for the most part, are doing pretty well on it. We have to record that, the scores to the state, and we have to have that done by the end of September. We're also giving the diagnostics, which the diagnostics tell us where children are when they come into a grade level. We do that in kindergarten, first, second, and third. So, the kindergartners are being heavily tested at the beginning of the year, it's a lot for little kindergartners to go through at the very beginning of the year. We do a screener, so it's not as long as a full-blown diagnostic, we do that later in the year, but it's enough, it kind of gives us levels. And then finally, we encountered something new and I just wanted you to know about it. We have some children that have severe nut allergies, so we have, we've designated a nut-free area in the cafeteria. One student has a special seat because they have to be washed down in a certain way. So, you'll, if you go in the cafeteria, you'll see a table that has, this is a nut-free table and these are the sets, so, that's kind of where we are right now. Just good teachers, you can be assured, we have good teachers that are working really, really hard with all these changes. I went today to the curriculum council meeting and I'm delving through, there are, there is a lot of stuff because this is the implementation year, and so there's a lot of stuff that we'll start having meetings with us as the teachers and it's kind of, it's overwhelming right now, but we'll get through it. Sometimes, with a go-to laugh, sometimes it's a sit-down, and then you go and work hard, so, that's it. That's all. We good?
We're good.
Did I miss anything?
No.
I'm just going to go.
I'll give you my stuff. It's easier. I agree, it seems like we have enough of all, it seems like it's just been, it rolls right in one end to the other. It's been a really good start, some bumps and, a couple bumps here and there, but overall, it's been really good, the teachers are working very hard, the staff again got the building really ready for everyone to come in and it really was a nice, nice touch, the work that they did this summer. We currently are looking at four dual credit classes where we're offering 16 credits for college, college credit. There's an upside and downside for the guy who's doing the scheduling, it's Mr. Zatchuk. He's chuckling because he knows, the more dual credits, they're called single classes because they're only offered one period. It's nice that we're doing that, but it also takes away from what other things we're allowed to offer, but to give you an idea, we currently have 23 students in Foundations of Communications, which is the basic level speech class for college, everyone has to take it. Those kids will not have to take it in college, we're going to do it right here, and they'll get semester hours. Chem II, we have 18 students in Chem II, we have 18 in physics, and we have 28 right now in English, 12. They can get six credits for that, so, you have to have certain scores on your ACT as well as your GPA has to be a certain percentage, and the kids have done really well with that. They'll be able to leave here this year with as many as 16 to 18 credits. And the goal was to reduce our number of post-secondary. Last year, we were at 11, this year we're at 4. So, we dropped that, which in the long run is, is hopefully saving us some money here and paying it out, and next year, the goal is to go to zero, so, we're waiting still. We have Intro to Statistics, which is also a dual credit, but we have to teach it a year before we approve, and the calculus, we have to wait until next year we approve, so, that will, that'll bring us up to 20 full credits that someone can get as a senior before they leave here, before they ever go to school, and there's a give and take with that, yeah, the school district's paying at this point in time, unless legislation changes, and that's a daily thing in Columbus, it seems lately, the legislation keeps changing from that standpoint. But it's very successful, it's off the ground, but as my mentor told me, see, there are some good sides and some bad sides of things. There's the good side, but there's the bad side, it's up to schedule. We also have a lot of events coming up. The September 25th, we have Keith Davis and William Green, pro athletes coming courtesy of Damascus Friends Church, they have a program where they pay for speakers to go throughout the local area high schools, and they will be here talking to all of our 6th through 12th graders on the 25th at 10:15 if anyone would like to come in and listen to their message. On October 2nd, we are taking all of our freshmen again to the MCCTC for the manufacturing symposium. We did that last year in the spring, this year it's in the fall, so we'll be going this October 2nd, after the bus slip and everything, Mr. Zatchuk, so he can schedule buses there. On October 3rd, the McDonald game, we're doing our junior high lock-in, student council lock-in, so if anyone wants to come up and spend the night with 75 junior high kids, you're more than welcome to do that. I think everyone should experience that at one point.
It's a wonderful experience, you've never done anything you like in your life.
So, that'll be on October 3rd. Then October 24th will be our homecoming game against Sebring, and the 25th will be the dance on October 25th. And then tomorrow evening, of course, we go to South Range and play at South Range, two undefeated teams, it should be a great game from that standpoint. Our current attendance, as of now, we are at 400 students between junior high and high school, so we've had a considerable move in, about, I think, 12 students in the last couple weeks have moved in.
Ground.
Yeah, and we've had quite a few in the last three weeks just buying houses, so it's good to see people moving into the community for our, for the school, but we're right at 400 right now, as of today, so that did go up a little.
I just have a couple of things. Last year, we have a group, Operation Keep Safe, the Kathy Yates and Jeff Brody did some things with, Danielle Matus is taking it this year, and she sent an email out and I thought it was interesting and I'll keep you. and she sent an email out, and I thought it was interesting, and I'll keep you updated on this, they're, they made a video, um, regarding, uh, teen, the topic of teenage drinking, and it's going to be released tomorrow on YouTube, and I'll get you the link, uh, when Danielle sends that out, and they're really, really making this a big to-do, um, they're actually having a film festival with all the other schools across Mahoning County, they're going to have Academy Awards, and we have some that have been nominated, Mr. Daltorio and Mr. Brogan are up for the Best Teacher Turned Actor Award, uh, John Timko and Tim Kohler are up for Best Actor and Best Supporting Actor, um, the Best Extras, we have several people that are in as Best Extras, there's also, we're up for the Best Film Award, and the winners are chosen based on the most likes on YouTube, so, uh, I'll get something to you guys once we get that out from Danielle. Uh, also, you'll see there, they're actually doing a film festival at Fitch High School on September twenty-fifth at six-thirty, and she says this is a red carpet event, she's not kidding, they're going to have the red carpet out, and, and invite anybody who would like to come, and I guess that's probably where they're going to present the award, so, uh, kind of a neat thing, and the kids really, uh, really spent a lot of time in doing a, doing a nice job on that, so, I'll get that information to you once, uh, we have that link, and you can take a, take a look at their video and see, um, also, we've, we've kind of kicked off the use of Drun, we've talked about that last year, that's that social media page that is confined to our school district, only by invitation can anybody be part of that, uh, Mr. Whitmer is, was all gung-ho about it before we were even ready, he's got all his ninth and tenth graders on there, and he's doing, doing English class work through it, um, they, they can post things from homework, class assignments, uh, test review sheets, they can upload files, you get instant notifications on your phone, uh, much like if you get those from the Weather Channel or different things, when somebody, you know, does something, um, we can use it as a community-wide, once the parents get on there for school announcements, school closings, some of them are one-way communication, so I don't get bombarded with, hey, when are you going to close school?
Is that like a morning kind of football?
It's, well, what he uses is Remind 101, and, and, uh, Mr. Whitmer was using that for his class last year, and he says this does, everything Remind 101 does and more, so, uh, as a teaching tool, as a means of communication, I know some of the elementary teachers were excited about it, just as a means of getting notifications home to parents, hey, don't forget this, bring this, this is due this day, or whatever, and the older kids some interaction, I think Mr. Barto has talked about getting started with it, with the seventh grade, uh, math classes, so, uh, you know, once we get it going, it's still in the early stages, but you'll be hopefully hearing about that, there's an app for it, you can put right on your phone, and you can check, you know, or get notifications, uh, for that, uh, our, some of our, our specific groups, PTO, Athletic Boosters, they can all get their own page to speak, or whatever the proper terminology is on that. Um, also, something to think about, and you can, you can email me as, as we, as things pop in your ideas or heads on the ideas for Red Apple Awards, I'd like to look at doing that, maybe November meeting, for some of the people that have gone above and beyond the, you know, the, the Call of Duty or some of the other ones, so, just shoot me an email, and we'll get a list compiled, and we'll invite them to, like I said, probably the November meeting, we'll kind of shoot for that. Um, it might seem a little bit early, but I was at the county meeting yesterday, and they've already started talking about the two thousand fifteen-sixteen school year calendar, one of the things that's coming up, looking way ahead, is Labor Day two thousand fifteen is on September the seventh, which means if we stay with our normal Wednesday after Labor Day, our first day of school would be September ninth. Um, so, you know, we've, we've talked about trying to get a, a county-wide calendar, um, you know, I know there's been talk about the fair, possibly going back to a five-day fair, somebody mentioned, and I don't know how, how sure it is, but somebody mentioned that the, the fair was considering looking at maybe not having the fair on Labor Day, going Wednesday through Sunday, because they're, they're Labor Day, which if we don't have the fair on Labor Day, then we could start on that Tuesday, you know, I, I looked, just did a real quick count, number-wise, and with, um, going a couple days the week of Christmas, before Christmas, because I think that year Christmas is on a Friday, which means Christmas Eve is a Thursday, we could pick up three days and go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that week, um, that would still put us out around June tenth, so, I don't know, it, we, that's all the further it got, it's just, you know, throwing some of those things out there, but I think what, what we would need to look at, the biggest decision, is if some of those schools go to, starting in August before the fair, you know, how we would want to deal with that when that time comes, so, uh, just, just kind of, kind of something to be, be thinking of down the road, and typically, we don't set that calendar until January or February, but they're starting to look at that already and, and go with that. Um, we are, we met with the electric, electrician and the, um, the design, and we're hoping to get that electrical work started next week, and, uh, get that done, get that wrapped up, um, and finally, our windmill mediation hearing was canceled, that was in August, we were supposed to go to that, um, right now, what we have is a pre-trial set for October third, so, which is only a few weeks away, actually, but, um, we'll see if that holds up, I know, like I said, I think I told you before, the, uh, the magistrate said that this, this case is one of the oldest on the docket in Mahoning County right now that hasn't come to trial, so, hopefully, that's something they want to, uh, want to get, get going with it, too, so, um, that's where we are on that. Uh, otherwise, I think we had a pretty good start, you know, the, um, the buses, we had the, first day of school, we had a, an accident, and around five-thirty-four was closed, from about one-thirty to about three, not a bus accident, but a tanker truck was in the ditch, so they closed it, so, right off the bat, the first day, the bus drivers had to reroute, and, uh, actually, I think I got more calls from parents on Thursday about buses not getting there than they did on Wednesday with the, with the accident and the road closed, so, uh, but, you know, the drivers, they, they sometimes get a bad rep, because they yell at the kids and, and, you know, wait for a hand signal across the road, and, and I, I told PTO last night, you know, parents need to understand that, that's, that's a safety thing, and, and those kids get off that bus and want to run across the street to see mom or dad the first day of school, you know, just because those red lights are on doesn't mean those cars are going to stop, and, um, so, they get, they get on them pretty good about that, and then the parents get mad, and they call, so, so we deal with it, another day in paradise, so.
Can I tell you guys something that happened today at recent, it was just a really good thing that our teachers did, we had a little, we had a, a little student that had a seizure out at recent, and the aide called in, it could, it, it worked perfectly, the aide called Nora, Nora responded, teacher just automatically came out, got hit, it was just like clockwork, nobody panicked, nobody freaked out, it was just like clockwork, so that's kind of, just want to let you know that your staff here does such a phenomenal job, that it was, everyone just pitched in, and within minutes, it was done, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing is, Missy had asked about potentially changing the, the meeting for October, because her son's playing junior high football on Thursday nights, October, that's where she is tonight, they're playing at Lisbon, and we've got enough kids that some of the schools are playing, we actually have a seventh grade game, so they don't start until a little bit later, so, I don't know if there's a night that's better, or, I think Wednesdays are still bad for you, Tues, maybe Tuesday that week, which is October seventh, Tuesday, October seventh, we, we, we sent her an email to see if, if, uh, there was a night that was better, uh, she didn't get back to us, but, uh, Tuesday, October seventh, does that sound?
Good for me.
Yeah, still at seven?
Seven o'clock.
Just remind, it's going to be a reminder, because I only remember you sending it, but...
I'll send an earlier one.
Thank you.
I'll send it the week before.
And that'll just be for that, just for October, because once November starts, though, unless he's playing basketball, those are usually Mondays and Wednesdays.
Any other bits? Do you want to share a drum?
Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Banyo?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?